We have two committee meetings followed by a general meeting followed by a closed session. So I will start call to attention the P and P committee meeting. We can wait until the general to do the pledge of allegiance, or you want to do it now? All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, okay, we do not have it on the agenda for the committee meeting, so we will wait for the board meeting.
Do it.
Thank you all for standing to attention. You'll get a chance to stretch again shortly.
Okay, so I have called the meeting to order. Now I ask for public comment if there's anybody that would like to address the committee. Seeing none, we are going to move on to items for discussion. The first is our first reading of board policies. And Bryant, I'll let you go through the overview. These are pretty straightforward changes.
So these are changes that are part of the review from Press Plus. We have three in our operational services, two in personnel, and then also in instruction, and then in students' policy 717 on vandalism. So they're pretty straightforward, just a few minor style changes more than anything, but no big changes. We will again have changes coming up with Title IX changes maybe in the next month or two.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the policies?
No, we'll see these again for a second.
Right. Okay, employment of employees. Again, I will turn it over to Bryant.
So these are employment of employees that we are recommending here at P and P, and then to move to the consent agenda for the Board of Education, hiring of some of our certified staff and our aides for the school year.
Any questions outstanding, moving on to the EdRed membership?
So EdRed again, it's an advocacy organization that monitors and actively influences education policy. I know that Lisa is very involved with EdRed and our school district leadership, can attend EdRed meetings and learn more about the legislative process and what's going on in Illinois. So this is our normal EdRed membership that we sign in every year.
Anything to add?
Don't let the fact that I'm on the executive board sway you when you vote on our renewed membership. But the District 128 has been a member of EdRed for long before I was involved in it. And I think the work that EdRed does is beneficial to us specifically and to all suburban school districts in Northern Illinois generally, so.
I'll add to that, if you haven't been involved or haven't, you know, at least attended one of the meetings, I would encourage you to do so. I was far more involved a few years back on several of the committees. And it's good work and you have some impact and help others gather to have impact on what happens in Springfield and how those things can be improved to help us. So they had a really good group.
The relationships that EdRed has with legislators definitely makes sure that our voice has a seat at the table when decisions are being made. So I think it's a very worthwhile organization.
And just as a shout out to Vernon Hills, they hosted the last event here.
And then this will move to an action item and not on the consent because we only do it once a year. It's not a regular, it's not a regular, something you vote on monthly. So that's why it'll move to an action item and you'll vote on it separately during the board meeting.
All right, so moving on to item D, the Board Liaison for D128, which Lisa has been for quite some time.
Since 2019, the Board of Education has a seat as a trustee on the Foundation Board. I have been serving in that role since 2019. I am no longer serving in that role effective this coming school year. So that position is open for one of our other board members to take on that role. As you know very well, the Foundation provides innovation grants to teachers every year as well as provides the funding for the student need funds at both buildings that building leadership can access for all variety of students that have financial need that is not met by our district budget. The commitment is rather small. It's one meeting a month. So if it's something that you're interested in, I very much encourage you to consider it.
Do you know when? That was the thing that blocked me last time.
Yes, Tuesday nights, Tuesday nights at 7:00 PM.
But it's, are they next to board meetings or are they in between?
They're next to board meetings.
Okay, good.
So.
So it's a possibility.
Okay, great. If you want to talk more about it, we certainly can. But if anybody else is interested, I very much encourage. It's a very fulfilling role with not a huge commitment.
Okay, moving on to the next item, future agenda items. You can see those are listed for August 12th and August 26th. Is there anything anybody else needs to discuss at this point? All right, very well. I will adjourn the P and P meeting.
And we move right into the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting.
We have to wait a few minutes.
Oh, you're right.
We got to wait till 5:45.
All right.
I'm not expecting to, I'm accustomed to the P and P going so quickly.
I think that might have been your record.
I think it did. I think that's the record.
Cara, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I'm going to try not to take it personally that we record set when I'm not there.
Hey, there we go. Cara, can you speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Carol will be joining us remotely tonight.
Are we ready, babe? Okay, I'd like to call the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting to order. Any, anyone wishing to speak to the Facilities and Finance Committee, public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have a few agenda items here. The first one's the stadium, Vernon Hills High School stadium naming rights. Who's got some background on this?
Yeah, so Dr. Gilliam's been working with Rustoleum, who's had the naming rights for over 20 years. That agreement expired in '22, but we have a new agreement ready to go for the next four years, total of $20,000, so roughly $5,000 a year that they would contribute. So Dr. Gilliam is excited and would like to move forward, and I think it's great.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board on that one?
I've always felt it was a little odd to have a corporate sponsorship, but I'm used to the name of the field now, so I don't see any need to change it.
It was somewhat new at that point in time, but it's a little more, I've seen it in other places now.
And they're local companies.
They were very supportive when we built the stadium, so. Will that be an action item then?
Be an action item because it's, because it's a contract designed to generate more than $1,000 by state law, the board has to approve it.
Sounds good. Okay, if no other comments, we'll move on to the FY25 rental labor charge rates.
So these are the labor rates we charge for rentals that largely are updated based on kind of raises and the employee groups that are part of that. Student is increasing kind of bit bigger than normal. It's really because the minimum wage is increasing on those. So we're kind of adjusting those based on what those anticipated minimum wages.
So this is basically what we charge people that rent our facilities to help pay for the people that help support those rental processes. So any questions on that from the, from the board? Okay, we'll see that at the board meeting. Disposal of equipment, looks like a pretty standard list, lots of Chromebooks, lots of old computers.
Did we replace the ShoreTel system? Is that why we're getting rid of that?
We are in the, in the middle of replacing it. So they're putting on the list for disposal. It'll probably take a while before we actually get all the new ones in. So this is more of a preemptive measure, ready to dispose for when that time hits. Because they're not sure at what point over the next few months are we actually going to hit that? And they usually do a disposal roughly twice a year.
I have a quick question regarding Digital Red. To the best of my memory, this is the first time I'm seeing Digital Red. Do we usually use them?
I believe they switched maybe the last time they did it because I have one receipt from kind of the data that they process, kind of where it all goes and things like that. So the company that they used before, it either didn't go, went out of business or it ended up costing us more to dispose of it through there. And so a, somebody in the industry actually created Digital Red as a company to kind of fill this gap in the market for sustainable disposal of IT equipment. And so Temple knows, actually knows the person. They've been around the field for a long time. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, and as far as we know, we're going to continue using this group to dispose.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, Dr. Temple, and that's.
They're very into sustainability and those types of things. So for those of us who are, you know, that's important, I encourage you to read up what they do and how they do it, so.
Thanks, Dan.
It's not a new company, but a lot of, a lot of school districts are using them now. Okay, so we will see that on the agenda. Future agenda items, not as lengthy as the P and P, but these are pretty typical things coming up in August.
I have one question. When do we get a cafeteria update?
We could probably have that at the next FNF meeting. I know that they're working towards getting that out of the streets. Yeah, we could do it then.
Okay. Anything else to add? Okay, we set another record here with the, the FNF. I call the Facilities and Finance Meeting adjourned. We will wait about 11 minutes and start a regular board meeting at 6 o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting for Community High School District 128. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke. Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Mittalish Cotwall.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here. We note six of our board members present, and our seventh, Cara Drumke, is joining us virtually, although she will not be able to vote tonight. So at this time, I would like to extend an invitation for public comment. I only have one person signed up, Marnie.
Good evening. I am Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident, proud District 70 and 128 graduate, and mother of a current District 70 student. I speak for myself. First, I want to sincerely thank those board members who listened to the loud, sustained, and unanimous outcry from our teachers, parents, students, and community members calling for the end of Superintendent Herman's tenure at District 128. We deeply appreciate those of you who listened and acted to do what needs to be done in order to begin the long and hard work of repair. We appreciate that our district is at a crossroads, and it is critical as we move forward that we do not repeat the costly mistakes of the past. One of the biggest and costliest mistakes has been the systemic pattern of bad hires and awarding of six-figure contracts to administrators at District 128. In her three short-year tenure, Superintendent Herman added four new administrators in three newly created roles, unwisely signing and binding our district to three-year contracts on unproven commodities to the tune of $2.5 million and building the most bloated administration in Lake County. Yet for this incredible financial outlier, the hires have largely proven to have been an incredibly poor use of resources with little to show for it except expensive buyouts. Although we pay top dollar, we have not received top talent. Two of her hires were placed on fully paid administrative leave for the better part of a year and have made or are making discrimination claims against the district, forcing us to buy them out. This board, with the exception of Mr. Cotwall, who was not seated until the fall of '23, voted to grant Superintendent Herman herself a five-year contract extension in March of '23 at a board meeting intended by over 100 teachers voicing their concerns and objections to her unsupported ideological initiatives. Against this backdrop, why was Superintendent Herman given a five-year, $1.5 million extension, a mere 1.75 years into her first three-year term? And now this community is left holding the bag. We presume we'll have to buy her out as well. Although we acknowledge that some costs are sunk and we must, we must do this in order to move forward, our community should not be in this position in the first instance. Herman was not a high performer, she was not a flight risk, no one pays more than our district, she was not being recruited away. It appears instead that the five-year contract was awarded due to personal friendships and loyalty versus actual merit. This community and our taxpayers deserve answers, transparency, communication, and collaboration as we move forward. These are not your dollars, these are our dollars. We urge you not to blindly renew numerous six-figure administrative contracts that are up in June of 2025, but which you are either now or will imminently be considering, much less for three- to five-year terms, which is entirely unheard of and inappropriate. Who we pick as the next superintendent will be a key hire, and they will have a mighty task ahead of them to clean up this house and right this ship. We will also seat a new board in spring of '25. Do not bind this district to yet more expensive contracts and saddle the next superintendent and board to bind them out. Eliminate DEI hiring practices and policies which have cost our district an absolute fortune and been a complete failure and yielded our district no tangible results. Corporate America and colleges alike are turning en masse from DEI. Just this week, Microsoft fired its entire acquisition equity team, as has John Deere.
That's three minutes.
We have experience in District 128. The DEI is inherently discriminatory, cost and fortune yields no return on investment.
Please wrap it up.
I have 10 seconds every time, thank you. We have $100 million annual budget, 72% surplus, and pay the highest property taxes in the state. That money should be going towards building much-needed and overdue operational MTSS, capital repairs at LHS, and meeting the needs of our actually most underfunded and underserved subpopulation, our 20% of students with IEPs. We have the money, and we must stop hemorrhaging it on the loaded and largely incompetent administration and DEI DOS nonsense. This board needs to be good stewards of our hard-earned tax dollars. Blindly following Superintendent Herman has not worked, must stop. Do better, your community is watching. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I'd like to invite the Teachers Union for their report.
Good evening. My name is Paul Carnstead, Secretary of the D128 Federation of Teachers. As always, I'd like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak. For the nine months, last nine months, we have used this time to deliver a series of messages detailing our concerns about the direction this was headed. Thanks message is much simpler. We want to thank the Board of Education for your decision to pursue a change in leadership for our district. It is unfortunate that this action ultimately needed to be taken, but we feel that it is absolutely the best path forward in order to best serve our students and our community. We understand how difficult the process is for the board. We appreciate the time you dedicated in making this decision. We want to simply say that we are dedicated to working together with our sister ESP Union, our interim and/or future district leadership, as well as the board in order to rebuild the positive relationship between our union and administration. We know how special our teaching staff is here in District 128 and how much this relationship benefits our students, the relationship with administration and all stakeholders. When everyone's on the same page and trusts each other, we work well together. Many of our union members have been spending time over the summer preparing for all the changes that we're going to see. Our members have been participating in D128U courses, working on summer curriculum projects, and attending other professional learning like AP workshops. We are excited for the upcoming school year and are preparing to welcome our students for opening day on August 12th. Our members are motivated, innovative, and passionate about working with students and setting them up for success. To the parents and community members, please know that you can be assured our teachers will be doing our best to support your students like we always do. The Board of Education, as well as our administration, we look forward to rebuilding trust so that we can work with and depend on each other in order to serve our students. Hope that everyone enjoys the rest of their summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnstead. Next on the agenda, we do have an ESP union report, but they emailed us. They are not presenting tonight. They did seat their executive board, and we look very much to working with them in the upcoming school year. At this point, we're going to review the agenda. Two more items on the communication topic. We will, we will visit the FOIA requests as well as have some good news presented by Associate Superintendent Bryant Kelly. We have our consent vote agenda, which we will make a small modification to. But this agenda includes items routinely approved by the board with a single motion, which includes minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, ed tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through board committee review and recommendation, and documentation concerning these items has been provided to board members as well as the public in advance to assure a thorough review. Items can be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I believe we do have one that will be removed.
Do we do that now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed a mistake in the closed session minutes for July 8th. I've pointed that out, and that'll be amended, put into the board docs, and we'll accept those in the next general meeting.
Yes, so that's a date change. There was just an error in the date. So we will present the consent vote agenda as amended. And then we will move on to items for action. We have four, which we discussed earlier in committee, the 2024 EdRed membership, our annual resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board members, the fiscal year '25 rental labor charge rates, as well as the Vernon Hills High School stadium naming rights. And then for discussion, we will discuss our board policy updates. First reading for a set for our regular review. For information, we will have a superintendent's report as well. Do we have an ISP? No ISP report tonight, any seat all, none tonight. Then we will briefly review future agenda items. We will convene in executive session tonight. During closed session, we're going to conduct interviews for the interim superintendent role. These candidates that we're interviewing tonight are finalists that were selected by Don Carmichael, Cara Drumke, and Sonal Kulkarni, who worked in pairs to interview a pool of candidates last week. The interviews tonight will take about three hours plus time for discussion. When we come out of closed session, we may take action to confirm our selection. So as you'll see, when we move to reconvene in open session, we have a possible employment action, and then we will move to adjourn. So moving back up to items for communication, we can review the FOIA requests.
FOIA requests are in the report, and there were two FOIA requests since last month's report.
Great. Any questions about the FOIA requests? Okay, seeing none, I will turn it back over to Bryant for the good news.
We have a short good news report as it is the summer, but we have four LHS students that have been selected to perform in the 2025 All-State Theater Production of The Prom. And they are, are in orchestra, Akshay Jalati, Eva Thomas in orchestra, and Anika Brody in orchestra, and cast member Rosalyn Wagner. The show will be performed January 9th and 11th of 2025 at the University of Illinois during the 49th Annual Illinois High School School Theater Festival. So congratulations to those students. And that's the good news.
Okay, great. So for the consent vote agenda, we are looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the July 8th closed session minutes removed.
Carmichael, so moved.
Thank you.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Apple.
Hi.
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We will move on to items for action. First, we will turn it over to Don Carmichael for items that came out of P and P.
Very good. Item A is the 2024-25 EdRed membership that we briefly reviewed in committee just prior to this meeting.
It is my pleasure to move to approve the EdRed membership dues in the amount of $5,350.
Batson, second.
Any discussion? Very good, roll call.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwall.
Hi.
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies 2125, board member compensation expenses, and policy 560 expenses.
So board policy 2125 is board member compensation expenses, and it outlines the regulation of the expenses when board, for the board members. And each year, we also have a resolution that you vote on to regulate the expense reimbursements, and that is presented in Exhibit 3. And so last year, we, you voted on and approved this resolution, and then this resolution will be voted on, and then it'll replace the resolution from last year.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies 2:125, board member compensation and expenses, policy 5:60?
Kulkarni, so moved. Benjamin, second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, Carol, roll call.
Hessel. Hi. Cotwall.
Hi.
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi. And I will turn it over to Dr. Batson. Oh, excuse me, motion passes. I'll turn it over to Dr. Batson.
Okay, thank you. A couple of items here coming out of the Facilities and Finance. The first one is the FY25 rental labor charge rates. These are the rates that we charge folks that want to rent some of our facilities and which require some staff to be on hand to, whether it's supporting technology or custodial services, whatever that might be. So these are the rates that we charge them, so they are adjusted each year as those individuals' salaries go up. Can we have a motion on this one?
I move Carmichael. I move to approve the FY25 rental labor charge rates as presented.
Cotwall, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? This was discussed also at the committee meeting earlier, so. Can we have a roll call, please, Carol?
Cotwall.
Hi.
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. The second item coming out of FNF is the Vernon Hills High School stadium naming rights, continuing our history of having Rustoleum compensate us for the naming rights of that. This started when the stadium was built, actually, first opened. So it's a long time partnership with them. So can we have a motion for this one?
Cotwall, so moved.
Kulkarni, second.
Any discussion?
We need to actually say the motion.
Do you mind?
Oh, yeah.
For first motion.
Cotwall, motion to approve the agreement with Rustoleum for the naming rights of the VHHAS stadium in the amount of $20,000 for four years.
Yeah, Kulkarni, second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
I actually intended to ask this back in committee, and I missed my little note. Do we need to make an adjustment to the date, the starting date? It says officially name the Community High School District 128 Athletic Stadium Field of Vernon Hills High School, Rustoleum Field, for a four-year period starting July 1st, 2024. But we're past that, so is it, is it something we need to adjust in the agreement?
I don't think so. The idea is just to encapsulate the full four years, just to keep it a clean four years, so.
And the name has already been on there since.
It's the fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Again, this was discussed earlier in committee. Can we have a roll call, please, Carol?
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwall.
Hi.
Motion passes. That concludes the Facilities and Finance portion of action items.
Thank you. Moving on to number five for discussion, a board policies update first reading. We discussed this in committee, and I'll ask Bryant Kelly to take us through these, the overview of these updates, please.
Yeah, so these updates, short updates this time. Most of these are due to a five-year review from Press Plus. And so we're presenting those to you, legal references, and then some other style updates. But very short updates. some other style updates, but very short updates, and this is our first reading, and then we will bring them back in our second reading August 12th, and then final approval on August 26th at the board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to items for information, the superintendent's report will be filled in by Mr. Kelly and, I believe, Dr. K.
Correct. We do have a presentation. We did want to give the board and the community an update on the start of the 24-25 school year. So the work that our district leadership team has done and will continue to do is rooted in our board policy. And board policy 1301, school philosophy that an active partnership with parents and community to provide a rigorous and effective educational opportunities for all of our students to achieve their full potential and a commitment to developing and implementing a visionary, innovative curriculum, a knowledgeable and dedicated staff, and a sound fiscal and management The board policy then drives our mission statement to develop graduates that are daring, and most of you are familiar with our mission statement. From there, to help develop those graduates, the board and the district has committed itself to a strategic plan in the areas of health and well-being, equity and inclusion, and explore multiple paths. So keeping that in mind, our board policy, the mission statement, and the strategic plan, this leadership team, our district and building leadership team, is committed to the success of our community, students, and our staff. At the July 8th board meeting, the Board of Education stated that the next steps in a superintendent leadership position regards to naming an interim superintendent for the 24-25 school year. The board also stated that they would rely on us, the current district administrators, for any adjustments for the upcoming school year. So I would like to acknowledge the work of our leadership team that includes the district leadership team, our building leadership team. This team learned of this leadership change and the request for recommendations from the board at the same time as the community on July 8th. The team has stepped up and worked together to ensure that the start of the 24-25 school year will be a successful one for our community, our students, and our staff. The leadership team also includes a few new faces from principal at Libertyville High School, associate principal at Libertyville, assistant principal for student services at Libertyville, and our director of student services. But truly, with our new faces and our veterans, it's a great team. So with the upcoming changes at the superintendent position and the tumultuous times over the past few months, we believe that we need to focus on three things throughout the school year, which are tied in back into our board policy, our mission statement, and our strategic plan. Those three things are belief, belief in the ability of students and staff to achieve excellence, belonging, every member of our school community feels welcome, supported, and valued, and then strong positive relationships between all members of our school community. As I previously mentioned, the Board of Education would look to us, the current district administrators, for any adjustments for the upcoming school year. So we have listed those items, eight items that the district and the building leadership teams reviewed in preparation for the upcoming school year. We want to ensure that systems are in place for everyone to be successful, and if we need a pivot, that we can do that. Those items that we looked at, opening week schedule for August 8th and 9th, when our staff comes back, the Accelerated Placement Act, equal opportunity schools, or EOS, surveys for the 24-25 school year, multi-tier system of supports, or MTSS, grading and assessment, heterogeneous classes, and then again, our strategic plan. Again, all of this work that is listed is tied back into our mission statement and our strategic plan. However, we've kind of been working in silos, and this is not ideal. Our ultimate goal, though, as a team, is to bring all of that, those silos, and back together. So if you can picture, back to our district mission statement, it's depicted as a circle, and the strategic plan is woven, interwoven together. So in order to have everything work better together, we're looking for the pieces of this plan to flow better together. There are also staff, students, and community that are invested in that work that we're doing, and we value their opinion. So this, again, goes back to our focus for the year, belief, belonging, and strong positive relationships. So we, Dr. Kalniss and I would like to review those items listed and then any adjustments for the upcoming school year. So first, as we start the new school year, the opening week with staff is as important as we all need to work together to create that culture of belonging. With an interim superintendent in place, the D128 staff will look towards their principal, their building leadership teams, their department chairs, and their teacher leaders for guidance and strength in the upcoming year. As such, we want to start the school year with our staff creating that sense of community in their buildings and departments first on Thursday, August 8th, and then we can work together as a whole from there. So the start of the school year information to our staff and schedule was shared with everyone last week, and so they should have the schedule for the beginning of opening week.
Moving to the Accelerated Placement Act, there's two important things about APA, which I know you're aware of, but just as a quick reminder, first, APA is a state law and will continue to be part of our district's course selection process moving forward. That being said, remember that APA is only one part of our course selection process, and there's many additional steps and pieces of information that make up the entire process. So we will be working to review the implementation of APA to identify ways we may wish to adjust this moving forward in the future. We want to look at those procedures while making sure we're still remaining compliant with the law, but seeking to create adjustments to our interpretations to make it easier and more clear for students and staff and parents. In addition, we know that there were concerns raised by members of our community about the District 128 course selection process that extend beyond APA and focused on our communication with families and some of the tools provided to help students and parents make informed decisions. So we will be reviewing our entire course selection process to determine ways that it may be enhanced for students and families to have clear information and effective tools in helping them make informed decisions about course selections and course placements for next year. In regards to the course placements from this year, as we've discussed several times, we've worked this summer and will continue to work to build out the academic supports that we are putting in place in the MASH and the ARC, as well as developing our new lab programs. And we are also committed to making sure that the community understands that we are ready to support our students, and if students need to make a change to their classes, we will have space available for those changes to occur. We've already added extra sections, as you know, in science and English, and we'll continue to monitor that and keep the board informed of any areas where we may see a need for additional resources to support either the academics of students in their current classes or to make space available for kids who need to move downwards. When it comes to equal opportunity schools, we entered into a two-year partnership with EOS in 2023 to help us develop procedures for addressing aspects of our District 128 racial equity and inclusion policy, specifically the commitment three, excuse me, which is to monitor and report on access to participation in and success in upper level and AP courses and on overrepresentation in special education. So we were layering some of those procedures and some of those processes on top of the already full plates of our staff members, and that made it feel like significant challenges, and it did not meet our staff needs. So this year, in, we've been working with EOS, and we are continuing to partner with them, but we will shift their partnership into a much smaller consultative role, where they will work really just with district leadership and members of our equity leadership team to be in a consultative role around some of the actions we're planning to take to continue to support all students' achievement, but they will not be in positions of leading staff workshops or staff meetings and adding work kind of to our staff who is already managing other things.
Another area that we identified was surveys, and so leading into this school year, we are going to reduce the total number of student and staff surveys for 24-25. This timeline of the surveys that we gave in the past will be very similar, though, again, that's based upon the needs of our students and part of our district's MTSS and our strategic plan goals. One of the surveys, the continuous improvement survey, will be paused this year to evaluate that data. It's very extensive data. And then the future for the future need for that survey in conjunction with the five essential surveys that we give. We're also evaluating the use of the EOS survey. Again, as Tom mentioned, this is tied back into our shift in our partnership with EOS. The other thing that we have heard is the sharing of results. So one of the priorities of our data team is they are going to prioritize the sharing of the results and the responsive actions to that data.
Our MTSS work has been moving forward at full steam this summer. We've had an excellent summer of meetings and logistics build-out, and we've had significant collaboration and coordination from many different members of our system. And we are entering the year, we believe, with much greater coordination and efficiency to the already outstanding efforts that our building staff makes every day to support student academic and SEL needs. What staff will see this year is a much better defined system of not only reporting of student needs, but when we're addressing student needs and the data collection around the quality and the effectiveness of our interventions. We will be developing methods to help provide some increased education and communication about our district MTSS, not just for our internal staff, but for our community and our students as a whole. And this year, our, some of our pieces of our system are new, and as we're developing those, intensive support is going to be placed on looking at our ninth grade college prep courses and our academic resources for our diagonal movers. So that'll be the intensive focus of some of our new MTSS systems as we continue to build that to eventually be a full focus throughout our system of student classes. With grading and assessment, so we've had our grading and assessment committee working for the past two years to review our practices and to work towards greater alignment and consistency in grading practices across the district's classrooms. As you'll recall, in May, the superintendent issued an email providing options for course teams to pause aspects of the implementation of our grading and assessment plan. Some course teams did choose to take advantage of that, but we believe, however, that opportunities to pause additional aspects of the grading and assessment implementation plan may exist, and we will work collaboratively with our building leadership and staff to determine these areas and communicate them when staff return to the school. So a lot of the aspects of that grading and assessment implementation, a lot of people have done a lot of work to realign their systems, their grading plans, their course syllabi. So we want to respect that work, and we want to support that work moving forward. And we know that there were some areas that staff were confused about the communication or felt that some of the staff development that they needed was not sufficient. So we're trying to make sure that we can pause in some of those areas to allow the basis of the work to move forward while giving staff the opportunity to pull back from some of the things that they felt uncertain about in that. Finally, for me, sorry, is heterogeneous classes. So the curriculum consulting we did this past year with Tony Frontier, that will not continue into the 24-25 school year. That served us as getting a model in place for how to do our curriculum realignments, but we can do that work internally with our own teams moving forward. Our freshman heterogeneous courses or freshman college prep classes are set and ready for full implementation this fall, and we will be using this year to really focus on how our students are performing, what needs our teachers in those courses have. We will be making sure that we are meeting with those staff members to be able to respond to emerging needs quickly that they may have. We will also recommend adjustments that may be necessary to our heterogeneous implementation timeline as we work and we learn about how the success we're having with our freshmen. That will help us shape our timeline for further implementation across the curriculum. I also just want to remind the board that as part of our heterogeneous classes and our curriculum realignment, there is no intent to eliminate honors or AP classes. That is not connected to this work. It's really alignment at the college prep level that is our focus at this point.
And the final item that we identified was the strategic plan. Again, as previously stated, our work is tied into the District 128 mission and the strategic plan. We're fully committed to this plan, and we value the work of our staff. Therefore, our strategic plan committees will reassess their action plans to be sure, to ensure that these plans align with any other shifts that may be occurring now. So those groups will get back in the fall and then look at any shifts that we can make. We couldn't make that decision at all right now. You know, as we look forward, we will continue to update at our next August committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one comment and one question, maybe, comment. Thank you for keeping an open mind and revisiting some of these. I sincerely appreciate that. I know it's a ton of work. We just see a few slides here, but I know there's a lot of work that goes behind that. So thank you to all of you. And only one thing I would add is as you look towards future presentations, I'd be interested in what kind of metrics you're collecting, or like the effectiveness of MTSS as an example. So that'd be nice to have, is what metrics you intend to collect and what actions you'll take as a result of data you see.
Absolutely. That is firmly in place for our planning, especially with the new initiatives that we are moving forward, how we would communicate success and/or frustrations or failures or setbacks with those, and what metrics would be valuable for you as a board to see and for us to use for further implementation.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you, Dr. K. Thank you, Bryant. Moving on, we do not have an ISB report or a CDAL report. We have our future agenda items as listed. Any questions or comments about the future agenda items? Okay. As I said, we're going to move to convening in closed session. We will be in closed session for three hours for interview as well as board discussion. When we come out, we may have action to take. We will be convening in closed session to discuss employment of employees under Illinois School Code 5120/2C1. May we have a motion, please?
Carmichael, move to convening in closed session.
Thank you. Second, please.
Benjamin, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Kulkarni.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. We are convening in closed session now. Okay. May I have a motion and a second to return to open session, please?
Carmichael, move to return to open session.
Kulkarni, second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Hold on.
We're going to wait for the system to catch up. We went there. Okay.
You ready for me?
Yes.
I move that the board employee Ray Lechner, oh, Carmichael. I move that the board employ Ray Lechner, oh, Carmichael. I move that the board employ Ray Lechner and Rebecca Nelson as interim superintendents for the 24-25 school year effective tomorrow, July 23rd, 2024.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kolkarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We look forward to working with Doctors Lechner and Nelson. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion and second to adjourn the board meeting.
Benjamin, so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.